James, ready?
Yes.
Hello, everybody. Call this meeting to order. It's June twenty fourth, twenty twenty four, six P. M. City Council's special session at the Oak Ridge City Hall and virtual. First order business is a pledge of allegiance. If you rise, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody. Is Jackie online? Yeah, Jack, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Counselor Coker.
Here.
Counselor Bjarnson.
Here.
Counselor Charman.
Here.
Counselor Brewer.
Here.
Mayor Kutchin.
Here.
Counselor Kenyon.
Excuse absence.
Okay, no Kenyon.
I thought I just saw.
He might be back.
Okay. I don't. I didn't hear her, so. Counselor Hollitt.
Excuse absence.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, James additions, corrections, or adjustments to the agenda?
Uh, just scratching eight point one, the minutes still not.
Okay. And thirteen point ones to scratch, I take it? Okay. Any counselors have any recommended changes to the agenda? Okay, nothing heard, and I have none. A public comment will start in the room. Is there, uh, and to clarify, there will be public comment now for things on the agenda, but we will have a specific public comment for the budget when that issue comes up, item ten point one. There'll be an opportunity after James introduces the, uh, the, the subject to make a comment there. So your choice on when you want to make that comment. So in the room, anybody need to make a comment, please?
Good evening. Linda Catterer, Brooklyn, Virginia. And I'm going to use my notes here so I can keep track of what I'm saying. I'm sorry, there's such a small audience. This is my comment is for that to be for everyone, the council and staff. So I will, um, say that, um, I'd like to suggest and recommend, I've already spoken with James about this just passing, that the council consider doing some kind of five year planning for the budget and, um, it seems that being on the Budget Committee for the past couple of years, um, has left me with the impression that financial health of the city is unbridge unless we have a more deliberate process based on cooperation. And I'm seeing that a lot of you might help with this and give us a solid ground. I'd like to thank you, uh, the all of those who are already in the mode of cooperation. Really appreciate it. I'd also like to make the suggestion that we recognize the staff and the elected folks who have worked toward budget solutions and are working on solutions right now. I encourage you to prioritize offering solutions on the budget matters and work to enable uh, your peers to be even more effective with their suggestions toward the budget. I'd also like to suggest that you support your mayor and C. A. to work together as a team. They are working hard to solve budget issues based by the city, and they're always building communications out with other government entities and building relationships with private industry. Mayor and the C. A. offer, excuse me, suffer a loss of momentum and their capacity to keep going is eroded when they are overrun and bogged down by disputes that don't matter in the long run. I have the thought that if you, uh, as counselors and as a, uh, team or for the city, uh, stop voting against one another and work instead on compromises that will take the whole city forward. And where would we be today if that were to take place? Um, another idea that occurred to me was there are small pockets of revenue available to the city that seem to be regularly pushed aside and not treated as an opportunity to make progress toward the goals the community wants to reach.
Thirty seconds, Linda.
Thank you. I'd like to see you take a second look at how you, how you treat revenue. Thank you. You're considered.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, online, any public comment online? Back to the room, any other public comment in the room? And one more time to online, last chance for public comment till the end of the meeting or until the budget agenda item. Nothing seen, we'll move on. Your comments, announcements, proclamations, uh, I don't have much. Uh, I just think this probably would be, is probably going to be a short meeting because we've agreed on this budget once, and I don't imagine that there's going to be much controversy around the rest of it. For the second reading and any council come counselor comments or announcements?
Um, Mayor, I just wanted to acknowledge that I'm here. I was having trouble getting logged in, but I am online now.
Okay, Jackie, did you make a note of that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. No, any other comments by counselors? Instant agenda is struck, appointments, business from the city council. Uh, item ten point one, which is resolution thirteen dash twenty twenty four, adopting the fiscal year twenty four, twenty five budget and setting the property tax rate, second reading, James?
Did you want to do public comment after?
After you introduce, then we'll do public comment, and then we'll go into a motion.
All right, uh, as council will recall during our meeting on the seventeenth this month, uh, council voted not to renew the public safety fee at two straight for twenty dollars per month. So it's been a loss of revenue, turned thirteen thousand dollars. And got together with, uh, Department of Health. Our financial team. Came up with six recommended, uh, cuts. That will fund the government. A loss of revenue. During the meeting on the twentieth last week, uh, council approved that's one, two, four, and six. Which was on the agenda bill. Votes on the other two cuts, five failed with votes three to three. Now, should it deliver late deliberations from council? Uh, there was unanimous vote to allow me to make the remaining that's the amount of hundred three nine thousand seven hundred and seventy seven dollars. Way I necessary. Spend the weekend looking at the budget. I did not find any silver bullets with some areas. Thought my, my be able to be trimmed, but, uh, not this late in the game, and it wouldn't add up to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, right? So I decided to rely on the recommended cuts that are already recommended or approved by the chief of fire chief, begrudgingly, I, I might add, but incentive to. Therefore, uh, the prepared draft of the adopted budget includes two additional cuts. Seventy nine thousand seven hundred and seventy seven dollars for the police department by eliminating half of the police sergeant position and all medical benefits. And then reduce safety, fire E. M. S. Seasoned service by sixty thousand dollars. Well, so in total, the cuts to policing fire are almost exactly the same as one dollar more cut from the fire D. M. S. budget, the police budget. Pretty much identical. So this is a decision I made, um, the board of council. This is the second reading for the resolution. Before the meeting, um, Council Brewer did find a scribbler's error on page one, um, resolution of the emergency services fund. The total there should be one million, seven fifty eight thousand ninety two dollars. The second one has a one hundred and ninety dollars. So I will correct that for that. It's fine. So yeah, so that's, that's where we're at. I, I do want to mention that, that in my opinion of these cuts, the hundred, sorry, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of cuts, my priority to refund on the defense would be the, um, police sergeant position. We're, we're lucky that our sergeant is willing to stay on as an appetite employee with no benefits. That's just, that's kind of an anomaly. If, if he left, it would be really hard to hire a police sergeant with thirty years' experience to work for appetite and no benefits. So that's certainly my priority. I hope these councils as well. Yeah, I think, I think overall, just with our budget, I think we, we were financially conservative, meaning our estimates costs were on the high end, rather than the low end to be conservative. So I think we would be a little healthier than, than we are showing up on paper right now. Uh, for instance, you know, the over twelve thousand dollars that we're going to save by not sending out the public safety that'll couldn't be accounted for in a budget, but that is real money to spend for postage, et cetera. Uh, that we will be saving. In addition, we just had an audit committee meeting. We found there's nine thousand dollars in water and wastewater funds, forty five hundred each. That was lent to those funds from the general fund a few years ago that, uh, needs to be paid back to the general fund. We're going to pay, uh, transfers. We did the next week to correct that. Again, something you can't show up with a budget, but that's, you know, another nine thousand dollars. It's a pebble, but they had a so. Don't hear it. Certainly, there's a public comment part, and along range, but it would be ideal, but we can also consider going to buy any of budget. A lot of city targeted with that, so. There's only a lot of stress in June, two years. Certainly something you can say. I think that's all I have to say about that. If people have questions, Eric online.
Thank you, James. Um, so now we're at a point where we're off, well, we'll offer public comment on this agenda item. In other words, the, uh, fiscal year twenty four, twenty five budget. Uh, so is there anyone online that has public comment on this agenda item? How about in the room, any more public comment? All right, nothing heard. So at this point, I'd ask counsel for a motion. You have one?
I moved that we approve and adopt resolution thirteen dash twenty twenty four, adopting fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget in the amount of seventeen million, ninety three thousand five hundred and eighty two dollars and making the associated appropriations and imposing and categorizing taxes after a second reading by title only.
I'll second that.
Hey, motion was made by Counsel Charman and seconded by Counsel Coker. Uh, is there a discussion or questions of staff, please?
Um, James, I know that, um, that your priority is going to be to the T. D. for, uh, replacing that, that, the funding, and I'm so happy that you're doing that. Um, I was wondering about the F. D. ambulance side, because I know those cuts hit hard, too. So is that something, um, especially like the, the O. T. that was cut out and the seasonal workers? I know that as the years, as the year progresses on, we could be faced with the situation that comes up like recently. Um, is there a plan in place to help recoup those funds as well with the audit that comes through or something, or are we planning to possibly make a supplemental budget if funds become available?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, I'm, and they would be my second priority.
I just want to make sure that they are still priority.
Absolutely. In fact, I would like to find more funding to hire more pharmacy sergeants. Yes, thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you, James.
Any counselors have comments online? Nothing seen. All right. So the motion was to approve and adopt resolution thirteen, twenty twenty four, adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget in the amount of seventeen million, ninety three thousand five hundred and eighty two dollars and making the associated appropriations and imposing and categorizing taxes after a second reading by title only. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Brewer.
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon.
Nay.
Counselor Charman.
Hi.
Mayor Kutchin.
Hi.
Counselor Bjarnson.
Hi.
Counselor Coker.
Hi.
All right, motion passes, uh, five ayes, one nay. James, can we read by title only if there wasn't unanimous?
Yes, you can.
Forget the fine print.
Yes.
It's only be able to do it twice in one session. That has to be unanimous. Okay. All right, James?
City of Brooklyn, resolution thirteen dash two zero two four, resolution adopting fiscal year twenty four, twenty five budget.
Thank you. Well, now that we have an adopted budget, I have one more motion to make. Um, I move to shift all fire department budget revenues and expenditures from the E. M. S. Fund under the general fund as a department and leave all ambulance transportation related revenues and expenditures in the E. M. S. Fund. Personnel expenditures, administrative overhead, and fuel costs should be apportioned at the equivalent ratio with fire calls versus E. M. S. calls.
Second.
All right, I made the motion, and it was seconded by Counsel Coker. Uh, questions of me or?
I need it one more time, if you could read it, if you don't mind.
Yeah, sure.
Or I can read it. I just wanted to get the verbiage. Thank you, because I understand.
While she's doing that, is there any other questions people have about the motion? To me, yeah, please go ahead, Counsel Kenyon.
Thank you. I don't know how to lose my hand on this phone. Um, uh, are we in discussion then?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Discussion.
So my concern with the motion is only the part that suggests to, um, separate out the, uh, based on how many calls each department has, because we are required to have, um, dual role firefighter, paramedics, and uh, you have to be available at all times for a fire regardless if there is one or not. Uh, my huge concern is the possibility that if we did it based on calls, there would be nothing in the fire department some years and very minimal in others if we had any calls. We can't really project if we're going to have calls. But, um, our A. R. I. S. O. rating, I, I'm pretty sure we have to have, we're required by the fire authority of some sort to have available firefighters twenty four, seven. So, I mean, I have always understood the department to be fifty fifty with staff based on all of what I've just said.
Thank you. Yeah, there, there'd be no change in Manning or any of that. This is just a way to budget those two functions separately. And my primary reason for doing this is, uh, as James and I worked to find solutions to ambulance transportation, it's much cleaner if we can show an E. M. S. department that has its own standalone budget. So the, the apportionment is not going to be personnel in itself. It would be just like Public Works does across all their Public Works funds. They apportion a point three or a point five or whatever the number is would be a portion of the fire and the, the, the rest would be a portion to E. M. S. And, and to me, the simplest way to do that is to see how much work do we do in the fire realm, and how much work do we do in the E. M. S. realm and divide it that way? And Chief Hollitt, you have a comment?
Yeah, I would just like to, um, kind of throw that out, that, uh, we actually used to separate those out years ago. Um, the ambulance was an enterprise fund and, um, the fire department came out of the general fund, but we selectively had like our fire chief salary came out of the general fund, uh, believe back then we had a fire marshal and, um, his funding came out of the, uh, general fund, and then our training officer, fifty percent of his wages and, um, benefits came out of general and the other half came out of E. M. S.
Thank you, chief. Any other questions?
So I, I would just want to interject that if what Scott just described sounds more reasonable in my mind, but my fear was the way the motion was made based on calls. Um, you know, that that's not gonna spread out fairly.
Well, I, I think it'll be more realistic, and I, I don't agree, you know, I guess I don't agree with the way it was done in the past. Uh, you know, signing the, the fire chief one hundred percent to fire when, when reality, you see him riding the ambulance, or you see him driving an ambulance sometimes, or you see him dealing with medical stuff. So I think the way I propose is a, is a cleaner and more effective way to apportion those money pools, whether it be overtime, administrative overhead, fuel costs. So tha- that's why I worded the motion the way I did. Counsel Brewer.
How much more, um, accounting time and effort would that take? Um, I'm just curious if it would cause like a a big separation, because I know that, I'm assuming that itself to separate the two would be difficult. It would take a whole new set of, um, things that, uh, chief has to do. But my question would be with that, the amount of time that it takes for, for instance, if an ambulance is called, I know sometime, I could be wrong, chief, uh, call it. Uh, forgive me, but sometimes, uh, both fire and, um, ambulance show up at the same time, and then ambulance isn't needed or fire isn't needed. Um, so I guess would you be referring to just the calls that go down the hill or the time or?
Well, Chief Hollitt actually allocates each call either fire or E. M. S. If I'm correct, I hope, chief, and that's the way it would work. You know, in his summary, he has X. number of fire calls, X. number of E. M. S. calls, and, and the ratio of those should be the ratio that is applied to all those buckets of money.
Okay.
Okay. Chief, go ahead, please.
My, yeah, you know, like I said, we did it that way in the past, and, um, you know, it's kind of going backwards. Um, we didn't really feel like it worked very well back then, and it wasn't an accurate description of what it actually costs from the fire department. Um, I think, uh, Counsel Kenyon was right on the money when she said that, you know, the fire department is also being, uh, part of our costs are being ready to respond to a call, not just responding to calls. You know, those costs still exist, whether it's, uh, related to equipment, training, uh, whatever the case may be. But, um, you know, there are employee costs and all those things associated with the fireside in addition just to the number of calls.
Thank you. Let me ask Eric, if he, the, uh, the amount of work required to do this, uh, you already kind of do it with public works. Would it be relatively simple for you to make this transition? Think you're on mute, Eric.
What, what's the questions exactly, Brian?
What's the, sorry, how much effort is this going to be to, to actually do this, what I propose, which is move the fire department under the general fund and keep the ambulance transportation at, on the E. M. S. Fund and make it into what it really is, or is a enterprise fund?
Oh, I don't think it's a lot of work. No, it should be pretty straightforward. Just talking with, uh, you know, Scott and making sure that we get all the accounts split the way they're supposed to be, but it, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay, thank you, Eric.
Yes.
Counsel Brewer.
Um, so if I understand right, uh, Chief Hollitt was saying that it's not just the calls, it's the being, it's the staffing to be ready to call. So I think what, I'm again, if I'm wrong, I think what he's saying that, um, to separate, uh, personnel, it would be hard to separate those two because sometimes they're just at standby. And I'm just, I wanted to make, I want to make sure that the fire department or the ambulance are going to get proper numbers with this process, because I don't want to get one lost in the translation when we're trying to cross it over.
Well, in my mind, because of the ambulance, we will have to have the twenty four, seven man Manning. So unless we, you know, unless something changes, they'll, they'll be here on call, and if they have to respond as a firefighter, then it's a fire call, and you know, the funds will, the funds will be a portion that way. And, and, and there might be a little learning curve as, as the C. A. and the fire chief and Eric go through this on how to do it. But again, I, I think it's much easier to sell our story about what we need and what our problems are if we have this standalone E. M. S. Fund that we can point to and say we're in a deficit of X. number of dollars, and we, we just, you know, keep doing this as an enterprise fund. Any other discussion before we go to a vote?
I kind of be curious if Eric knows what is most common in other cities.
Very few cities have an ambulance service, do they?
Sure. Yeah, I'm not, I mean.
I think there's one other, but.
It's one of them, right?
Uh, someone told me there's very, yeah, one or two others, but.
Um, years ago, I did that research project, but I don't remember what the split is, but, uh, echoing with the mayor said it's really rare to have fire and E. M. S. under the city's umbrella.
Thanks, Eric. All right. Uh, the motion was to shift all fire department budget revenues and expenditures from the E. M. S. Fund to under the general fund as a department and leave all ambulance transportation related revenues and expenditures in the E. M. S. Fund. Personnel expenditures, administrative overhead, and fuel costs should be apportioned at an equivalent ratio of fire calls versus E. M. S. calls. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Yeah. Um, could you put a copy of that on my desk, please?
I'll email it to, oh, yeah, I'll just leave it on your desk.
Or email, either way, thank you. Counselor Charman.
Hi.
Counselor Brewer.
Nay.
Counselor Coker.
Hi.
Counselor Bjarnson.
Nay.
Counselor Kenyon.
Nay.
Mayor Kutchin.
All right. All right, motion fails, uh, due to a tie, three ayes, three nays. Moving on to item ten point two, and that's a summary of the city administrator's annual evaluation. So, um, this is set by resolution that we do an annual evaluation on the city administrator. Um, and it, and it has actually forms that go with it, and it's all very organized. Um, typically, it's supposed to be done, so the budget, it, it can impact the budget committee and, uh, which means it should be done somewhere around the turn of the year, the new year. Uh, I'll admittedly, it was my fault, and it was late this year, so we were just getting this done. Um, but the evaluation includes all the counselors writing an evaluation, and we had a hundred percent participation there. A three sixty by the staff. Uh, a three sixty by the staff and it's not obli- it's not mandatory, but they are eligible to put in. Evaluations through the city attorney and he anonymizes those results and summarizes them and hands them back to the council. And so all the counselors got uh, able to see what the staff reviews were. And then uh, James himself does a self evaluation. So that's the three components of this. And then we meet in executive session, which we have done the last two regular meetings. And uh, first to um, discuss and then next to review the compiled evaluation. That said, James had a satisfactory evaluation. Uh, he's done some good work and I know he's faced enormous challenges since the day he got here as a city administrator. Uh, and he works very long hours. Um, so uh, we did, the council did offer um, goals for the next year. And we're going to actually meet again and try to formalize and prioritize those goals. So he to give him some guidance on what what we think is important. Um, but uh, what it really ends up being is that uh, as part of this process, we also look at uh, compensation. And in this case, uh, James will uh, move to us, he's currently a step six, he'll move to a step seven. Um, which is standard across all public employees. If you don't have a negative evaluation, you move automatically to the next step. So um, he'll do that on his anniversary, which I think is July sixth. Uh, he'll shift to a to a step seven. And uh, the next, because I was late this time, the next evaluation is going to start in November, so we'll be turning around. And writing another one so we can, this way, if you get the evaluation done by the turn of the year, you can. Hand over whatever recommendation you have on compensation to the budget committee and they can factor that in as they, and James can factor it in as they write the budget and approve the budget and adopt. Um, any case, yeah, um, like I said, James uh, works extremely long hours and extremely hard and he's he's done uh, an effective job. So. Um, James, any anything more you want me to talk about?
No, I was just going to make one request and that that would be. If I could get the step on July first, because we're trying to get everybody on July first now, I realize.
If it's if it's the way it is, I I don't know how it's worded in your contract, but if if it's no problem in the contract, I, you know, this five days is fine. Yeah. All right, um. Ten point three, that's potential serial meeting violation on Facebook Oak Ridge chat forum post on six seventeen twenty four. James?
All right, as we discussed during the last meeting, last week, uh, there was this uh. Potential serial meeting where in uh, four counselors posted comments onto a Facebook over chat forum. Posting over two hundred and fifty nine uh, comments on the post. And uh. Yeah, but anytime four counselors are discussing city business or potential city business can be considered serial meeting. So we had this happen before and we decided uh, what we could do is compile the entire transcript of all of the comments. So that will be saved. Which they are, they're posted on the city website, which they are on the calendar for today. We also have printed copies for folks. If you don't have Facebook, you want some of the, all of the comments. We decided to meet all of the comments for context because of the counselor. Comments, yes, I agree with that and you know what they're agreeing to. Start two hundred and seventy six. Um, so we have that compiled, thanks to Counsel Charman, we should have let some other work. Do that. So um, and I fully realized it's worth the intention of the fourth counselor did not know that three counselors had already commented. The ice research is issued. I can only see two because it basically shows that the first fifteen comment is then it says nine more, but it won't show them. Are still, you know, just to inform counselors to be as careful as possible. I realize that most of these comments, it's the ones I saw. Correcting misinformation that is out there, which is helpful, that we really can't, just can't discuss all council business. Online and if there's answers ever had a question, like if they're not sure if there's three or four. Counselors have already come in, I'm just being very diligent. And if there are already three coaches that have come in, but there's some misinformation, it's corrected, it brings my attention. I could put a comment in there to correct the misinformation or perhaps one of the coaches already commented. Did that. Reliance of balancing that. You need to get information out of people. First, but just we can't have these actual serial meetings, so. Yeah, so the information is now available to everyone online or.
On both the last meetings discussion as well as this one?
No, I just the all the comments themselves.
Yeah.
Uh.
The other.
I can put, I can put it on last meeting too.
The other serial meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
When I, there's only, I'm only aware of one. Um, six seventeen.
I thought there was one that was.
There was, uh, yes, there was a.
It turned out not to be a serial meeting.
At least there's no evidence, but there was a complaint from another citizen that thought there may have been a.
Yeah. Okay.
Found it. Listen, it's all just very careful.
Anyone have any questions on serial meetings? Yeah. Counsel Kenyon, please.
Yeah, I wanted to find out who who was the fourth counselor on that meeting that we're discussing.
Uh, I believe it's Counsel Jornson ended up being the fourth, but again, she did not know that.
Okay.
Yeah, as I was doing my homework for this, the uh, as it turns out, you know, this was all this this new uh. Policy of the Ethics Commission having uh, citizens over the public meetings. It was done by a House bill uh, recently and as I was doing the research, you know, the looking at the impact implications. If if the city council or any local government does it is uh, particularly if a citizen thinks it's a serial meeting. They can submit a letter to the city at the point the city has to respond in writing. One, do they agree with it? Two, if they do, what are they going to do about it or dismiss it altogether? So uh, and when in that response, they have to copy, send a copy to the Ethics Commission. And it has, you know, the Ethics Commission has the ability to levy fines on individuals. So just be aware of that as as we go through this.
Uh, Mayor, could you repeat that House bill number?
Um, I don't have it. I'll have to send it to you via email, if that's okay.
Okay.
All right, uh, moving on to eleven, item eleven, eleven point one, other business and updates from the CA.
All right, um, one thing, uh, we're going to have another meeting on Wednesday. I forgot. Uh, we had agreed to have a special session for Connor Nolan to come in and uh, give a presentation on. The effort to have the off, or I designated a scenic bike way.
Yep.
Um, so I'm sorry, I forgot to put that on the calendar. Since we're going to meet on Wednesday anyway, at six P M, the presentation will also be. Uh, submitting the. Twenty two, twenty three audit. Uh, we'd like to ask questions of the auditor, Teresa Anford will also be available. So Wednesday, six P M. Another special meeting. Special session just for those two subjects. So I can get the draft audit out. And I.
Yeah, anything else?
Uh, I just could let folks know that we've got another big event in Greenwater Park starting this Thursday, Thursday through Saturday, and it's a travel around your bike race. So we have a lot of bikes around. This week.
Always good. All right, nothing removed to consent agenda. Uh, we've already covered ordinances and resolutions. No public hearings, uh, back to public comment. Anyone online? Have a public comment or we adjourn? Anyone in the room? Very quiet bunch tonight. All right, with that, now your motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right. We adjourned at six forty.